But in regions to God.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll start off with public comments on, so Mr. Gainer, you signed up first.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm Mike Gainer, eight and ten, Hobbit's Lane. As you know, I've been trying to keep the public informed about Sylvester Manor, their comings and goings. And there was a pretty momentous event last week. The zoning board of appeals approved a special permit for them. A total of one person from the community showed up. It's a 240-acre property. And so people just don't get very informed in this. So I thought it would be helpful that everybody understand what's taking place. And if I get anything wrong, you please correct me. So one of the most important aspects of that meeting is that our zoning board of appeals, Phil D'Orrio, Lisa Lynn Colligan, Lisa Crackler, Thomas Bravino, approved that Sylvester Manor can be what it's always really been, an event venue, that they can have concerts there. And the permitted uses inside of that zone, inside of that double A zone, are either for single-family residences, farming, or special permits are issued for institutions that are of educational nature. So I don't understand how having concerts can be educational in nature. I have a real problem with that. And I'm trying to figure out how to make sense of that, especially given the behavior of Sylvester Manor, the way they've been operating illegally at that site. And that, most people aren't very familiar with this. Sylvester Manor has been operating an illegal institution on that 240-acre parcel for over 15 years, and the town board's allowed them to do that. I have a real problem with that. I know Gordon has been spearheading, Gordon has been spearheading the zoning board of appeals, representing the town board on this. And so I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about that. As a citizen inside its community, you know Gordon, I'm a developer. I build houses out here. And so I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sense of this, why Sylvester Manor has been allowed to operate illegally out there. And now they've been rewarded for their bad deeds. They've been, they've been given a special permit that's allowing them to have concerts out at that property out there. And I'd like to understand how that should analogize to my own experience. So, for example, if I were to go out and build a 12,000-square-foot house, right? No permits, no bearings, it's nothing. You can only build a 5,999-square-foot house in this community without going to the zoning board of appeals. If I did that, what would happen to me? How am I supposed to feel about that? If I were to knowingly break the law, right? Go out and build something that I'm not supposed to, and then go to the ZVA? Do you think I'd get that similar sort of treatment that they did? Because they have a long pattern, a very long pattern, of doing illegal things on that property. These are not good corporate citizens. I brought this to the attention of the community before. Last year, they know what the requirements are in order to have a concert out there. They had an illegal concert out there, they had hundreds of people, they served alcohol, and yet they still, no one's taken any enforcement action against them. These are the kind of things that Sylvester Manor does. And I'd like to understand why that corporate citizen is being given a special permit to have concerts there. Can you please respond to that, Gordon? I'd appreciate it.
Michael, thank you for just bringing it to the town board's attention. My job really is just to listen to you today, okay? And if you want to talk to me at another time, that's fine, okay? But I'm not commenting today.
You're not going to comment?
No.
Okay. The community needs to know the next step inside of this process before they'll be allowed to have concerts on that, on that property over there is they have to go through site plan review. So they've made it through step number one, they made it through the zoning board of appeals. Right now, these folks are in the business, right? They are in the business of having concerts out on that property. This full-page ad ran inside of the, inside of the Shelter Island Reporter on October 7th. This is not an incidental use over there. They are in the business of having concerts. I showed you one where they sold tickets on Eventbrite, hundreds of people. They just did this again on the 7th, you approved it on July. This is an event venue, they're having a concert venue. In this case, we got lucky, it's just Gene Casey and the Lone Sharks, fall concert. I don't even know if they had it because of that weather that weekend, I didn't, I didn't follow it. But either way, they got approval for that, right? What happens? Now, this thing, I don't know what you understand about this concert. Take a wild guess, just a wild guess, how many outdoor concert venues there are on the east end of Long Island that are legalized? In the town of Southold, Riverhead, Southampton, East Hampton, and the town of Shelter Island? Take a wild guess. Poor guess, zero. Zero. It's never happened in any other community. Now, this is codified, it's in law, it's only part of appeals. Said that with very, with effectively no parameters whatsoever, that they can have concerts. We have a concert venue on the island there. Gene Casey and the Lone Sharks, that's a couple hundred people show up, that's one scenario. There is nothing preventing them from having, say, Beyonce out there, right? Do you know how many people show up at a Beyonce concert? Forty thousand people on average. There is nothing we can do if that thing gets approved. That would be completely legal. Do you think I'm being melodramatic with my, with my Beyonce analogies? This is another illegal event that they had out there. They knew what the requirements were, they filmed an illegal film out there, what's defined in the code as a megaphile on Shelter Island, right? And I'm, so I'm trying to understand, this, this corporate citizen who breaks the law time and time again, why we would be giving them special permission to operate a concert venue out there? Because they can absolutely do this now, it's passed. Phil D'Orrio and Lynn Colligan and the rest of the board approved them to have that event. That's inside of the zoning board of appeals, that's been approved. Now it's up to you guys. It's going to go in front of you. This is a very, very serious problem. What I would like to understand, Gordon, there's been a pattern of bias towards this applicant, right? For years, when you were chairman of the Community Preservation Fund Board, you coordinated with Ben Dyke to funnel $2,055,000 into Sylvester Manor's coffers. What the town got for $2,055,000 was a promise from them that they wouldn't develop 16 acres of scrubby woodland right across the street from the IGA, the only thing less attractive than the IGA itself, right? That land was undevelopable. We didn't get any land for it. I mean, people don't understand this. We paid, you paid $2,055,000 for a promise from them that they wouldn't develop that property. That long-term fact that you voted to allow them to have two events there this summer alone leads me to believe that you're biased towards that applicant. So I asked the very same question of Amber, and she gave me a very straight answer, and I believe her. I asked her, when they come up in front of you for the, for the site plan review, can we expect, given your pattern of behavior, that you are going to treat them unbiasedly? After you've given them $2,055,000 of town money that they weren't entitled to, they got us absolutely nothing, and you voted twice to allow them to have concerts that are opening the door for much larger venues? That's the only way they make money. They said that, they've gone on record. The only way they make money is having events. So can we expect you to be unbiased inside of that, inside of that site plan review when it comes up here, which is going to happen next?
Yes.
Good to know. Thank you very much, have a great day, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Next item agenda is the WAC slash WQI request to proceed with the public hearing to fund water testing. Andrew Chapman is here to speak.
Thank you very much, thank you for having me this afternoon. I'm here on behalf of the Water Advisory Committee to ask you to schedule a public hearing for an ordinance to authorize $25,000 WQI funding to test 250 wells in the center of the island. I've been before the Water Quality Advisory, Order Quality Improvement Advisory Board, they support this request. So for the record, why do we need this testing? In late 2023, the WAC-sponsored testing focused on nitrates and bacteria of 158 wells in around the center of the island. Forty-four percent of those wells showed nitrates at levels at or greater than five milligrams per liter, which is substantially above the naturally occurring background levels of about two to three milligrams. It's likely that that higher-than-background nitrates concentration indicates contamination of groundwater from septic tanks, because there's no other source of contamination around, like industry or agriculture. And many of the lots with wells and septics in the area are below the minimum lot size. The concern is that nitrates don't travel alone. So the questions are, what other contaminants are in the water from wells in the area? Do the concentration of those contaminants exceed the US EPA and New York State standards for drinking water? And where is that occurring within this community? This testing is designed to answer those questions. They are important to public health in these neighborhoods. This isn't a general study of aquifer water quality. Unless the residents in this area are buying bottled water or test or treating the water themselves, this is what they're drinking. How will we conduct these tests? The Suffolk County Department of Health, Health Service Bureau of Drinking Water will conduct the tests. The samples will be tested for the full range of contaminants, over 200, which are regulated by the USPA of New York State for drinking water. The 2003 test was on nitrates and bacteria only. The $25,000 requested will cover testing of about half the 500 wells in the area at the county's standard cost of $100 to test. The test, the 2003 tested, 2023 test area was divided into 13 zones. We plan to use the same zones with some pretty minor modifications for this next round. We plan to start with three zones to prove that our methods work, that our messaging out to residents works and is effective. And also to smooth out the county Department of Health workload. Plan to start with zones nine and 11, which are right around here, and zone four, which is further north. That's a total of about 200 wells. All of these areas had, zones nine and 11 down here had relatively high levels of incidence of nitrates. Zone four was kind of in the middle. All of them had pretty good resident participation. Town engineer is going to choose 50% of the wells in each zone to be tested to get good geographic coverage in each zone. That will ensure that we get statistically valid results in each zone. Town engineer will contact, or the town will contact each owner of the well selected and ask them to participate. If they decline, the town engineer will pick a property nearby to kind of maintain that geographic dispersion. The homeowner who agrees to have their well tested will complete the county's test form and pay $100 for the test. The town will reimburse the homeowner once the county confirms that the samples have been obtained from the homeowner's wells. The county staff will draw the samples, do the analysis, and report the results on individual wells to the homeowners directly and to the town on the basis of zone. The WAC will analyze the data for each zone to determine what percentage of wells are non-potable and why those wells are not potable. That's going to tell us whether we have a problem, why we have a problem, if we have one, and, at least by zone, where. If we have a problem, if, the town can present, or the WAC can present solutions to the community, those solutions will depend on what the data tells us. If we see contamination, for example, if we see contamination, but all the wells are still potable, we might recommend follow-up testing in five to 10 years. If we see a low percentage of non-potable wells and they're geographically dispersed, we might recommend in-house treatment. If we see clusters of non-potable wells, we'll probably, we would recommend in-house treatment and also cost out a community water system for that particular area. The options that we consider and that ultimately we end up presenting to the town board are going to depend on the test results. Many have been concerned about drinking water quality in the center of the island for years. The fact that 44% of the wells in the area tested in 2023 showed nitrates well above the naturally occurring level suggests there's some contamination from nearby septics. We owe it to the people who live in this area to learn whether the drinking water, their drinking water is safe. And if it's not, we, and we can present solutions to the community to address that issue, if indeed we have one. So I'm urging the town to find out the facts and follow the facts. So that's what this is all about. The next step in the process, as I understand it, now that we have WQI AB support for WQI funding for this, is to ask you to schedule a public hearing, at which time, public comments will be taken. And then, an ordinance would be put before you to authorize this. So happy to take any questions. And I appreciate the time on the agenda.
I don't have any questions.
You're just requesting for a public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, so the public comes out and they participate in asking questions as to what, any questions that might exist?
Correct.
Okay.
And I will either, I will take your guidance as to whether I should attend and be there to answer questions, or whether it's just an opportunity for the public to express their views. I don't, no, I've never done this.
Either way, I would say, you've just done the mini presentation now, I would suggest that you do the same at the public hearing, so that you present what the ask is. We will have a resolution drafted up that, you know, approves spending $25,000 on water testing. But then you could open, and then the public can ask questions. And they're all directed at the town board, but you might have more information for answering some of the questions.
Fine.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good with setting the public hearing. So we'd set the public hearing on November 10th and have a public hearing on December 1st.
Thank you in advance for your support.
Okay, Andrew, you end. When you asked the question, when you made the statement of determine, you're, you're not really, you're going to determine the condition of the water, but you're not really determining what the problem is. Am I correct in that?
By zone.
Right.
We will have a very good sense of the percentage of wells that are non-potable. That will suggest, if, if there is a significant percent that's non-potable in concentrated areas, that's going to suggest solutions. And we're going to, if, if, if that's what the data tells us, we'll come up with ways of dealing with that issue. So we're not going to know by, the town will not know by well which one is non-potable. The town's going to know by zone, which are pretty compact, particularly these first three we're doing, by zone, where, where the issue is, if indeed there is one.
I think it's good to move forward with it. Will you be able to determine if wells are too close to the septics?
Not from this testing, but we can.
You'll get, you'll get deeper into it.
We'll get deeper into it, and you can, our data isn't perfect, but you can see the number of lots that are smaller than the minimum lot size. And if they're occupied and they've got well and septic, you can see the concentration of all of that occurring in a fairly small space.
And I'm assuming at the end of this, you're testing water, but will you also determine whether we have cesspools or whether we have, you know, outdated systems? At the same time, you're gathering this information as to determine how to move forward?
Probably not from these results.
Okay.
What we'll determine from these results is functionally.
Quality of the water.
The quality of the water that people are drinking, unless they're treating it themselves. Okay? So the next step for you, I think, as a town board action, is to actually pass a resolution to schedule a public hearing.
We'll set the public hearing on November 10th.
On November 10th. And I may not see you then, but I will.
It's not necessary for you to attend then.
I will see you on the first.
Yes.
Assuming you pass the resolution. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your collective interest and focus on this topic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Next item on the agenda is community development lot grant projects. And we discussed it at the Capital Planning and Grants Committee meeting. We have two possible projects. One is making the police department bathroom handicapped accessible. And the other is the Legion elevator slash lift. So Joe is going to work on pricing for the police department bathroom. And Ken is going to look at the Legion elevator lift project and come back with pricing. We have to pass a resolution by, before December 1st, so that we can get the application in. We won't have an opportunity to discuss this again until November 18th at a work session, to know which direction we're going to go with funding requests and what the decision is. So we will have to have a special meeting, sorry Amber, we're doing it to you again, on, we'll have a discussion about the various projects, Ken and Joe will be there. And then we will have to do a special meeting to pass a resolution to apply for the CDBG grant.
And these are 80-20 grants, right? As I recall, I don't have my notes here.
CDBG? No, it's 100%.
100%.
Yeah. All right. Next on the agenda is site plan review for the application of Gardner's Bay Country Club. So for site plan review, we have a various standards of review in considering applications. I'm just going down one. There are 14 of them. The first one being traffic. There is, it does, in my opinion, it doesn't apply. And when we did the pre-conferencing as well as discussions, nothing came up with respect to traffic. I thought it's not applicable in my notes. Yes. Same thing with interior circulation and parking. Yep. Landscaping and screening. There was a planting plan. It had a berm. Yes. It was in one of the exhibits. Teresa approved it, or, I wonder what, now Teresa, but Grocer reviewed it. Yes, Grocer reviewed it, because I don't think Teresa had it when she did her letter.
Is that what we're doing in this exercise, just going through the site plan review? I thought we were going to do, go over the SECRIS submission.
We have to do both.
Okay, all right.
I just figured I'd start with the standards of review.
Okay.
Because that will lead into the, what's the term called?
Draft.
The draft, yeah. Yeah, it's the, yeah, yeah. Part 23, the. Yeah, no, this is for the whole, the whole shebang today. Yeah, the neg deck on the SECRIS. So on the landscaping, we do have the, that plan. And so we'd want to incorporate that into any, any resolution we dropped up. Existing development, common comp, brains of plan and prior stipulations. That, I don't think that there's anything that came up during the various public hearings with respect to that. And correct me if I'm wrong, as I'm going through these, anyone? Natural features and environmental concerns. And I think that's where the PW Grocer EAF, EAF comes into play. So did everyone have a chance to look at?
Yeah.
So for the part two, everything came back with no or small impact may occur. And then part three had a lengthy section on what the request was and the impact on surface and wetlands. There's no significant adverse impacts on groundwater quality, coastal resources, critical environmental area. There's going to be no clearing of trees. The visual impacts is addressed by the berm and the plantings. This is controlled by unsating the shed. So as we move forward, the first resolution that we will need to do, not today, but on November 10th, would be to adopt lead agency status in this negative declaration. So does anyone have any comments or?
I have comments on the short environmental assessment form.
Okay.
I'll wait until we go through that, item by item.
We're on it. Once we hit, once we hit the natural features and environmental concerns, like, this is where we should address it, because we're on number five of the standards of review.
All right, I'd rather wait and go through the form when we go in through
Okay.
the short environmental assessment form. I'd rather go through with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. So structural features, we said not applicable, pavement not applicable, lighting just has the one light. That was addressed by PW Grocer. Drainage, it's, I think that's been addressed in this as well. Public utilities, water supply sewage disposal by public address or sound system, didn't apply, although the noise was considered and looked at. ADA compliance not applicable, energy conservation.
Amber, just before we skip over the noise thing, I think we should directly address the sound insulation that's going to be required for the pump house.
Okay.
And either, because I don't think it was in the Grocer report, maybe I skipped over it. But if not, we should make sure it's in the resolution requirements?
The noise impacts were in there, based on the submitted noise specs for the pump motor and the noise estimates correspondence provided by their consultant, something Bennett. The other Bennett. It took the sound level of the pump, which at 73 decibels inside the pump house, the exterior sound levels would be reduced to 37. So yes, we should put that into the resolution to make sure.
Yeah, I just don't want to skip over. Cool.
Okay. Energy conservation and size of the subject parcel. So those are all the things that we need to consider with the standards of review and to put into any resolution that we would do. Okay, so moving on to the SECRIS. Go ahead. You're off.
Okay. Where are we? Page one of part one.
Are you on part one or part two?
Part one.
Okay, there are, there are.
A citation?
Okay.
Of the short environmental assessment form?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or one. Brief description of proposed action, just edit, minor edit, 116,300, I believe is the number. Not 116,000. I know that's small, but to be consistent.
Yes.
What's the exact number? I mean, whatever it is, we should put it in.
It's in the sample recommendation language for lead agency designation. So I think Peter.
It's in the Grocer report, the exact number.
Yeah. Okay, yep. Great. I just have one question for Thomas. This is actually, so the part one gets prepared by the applicant. So would we give this back to the applicant to make that correction? Or do we just take it and incorporate it into our own?
Yeah, I mean, the town does the parts two and three. I think whatever you, when you pass a resolution, you just reference correct size. I mean, I guess the applicant can correct part one, but I don't think like it's absolutely necessary.
Just trying to make sure we do everything properly.
Great. In that same. Alright, in that same space, there is no mention of the pH control and wedding agent dispersment intended for unregulated and unmonitored use on the course.
If I remember correctly, the wedding agents weren't being distributed through the cistern. They're distributed, they're applied in another manner, so.
It's not, it's unregulated and unmonitored right now, Ben.
But it's not going into the cistern, is what Ben was saying.
Yeah. What reference, do you want a reference to that in here, Albert?
There, I have seen no mention of pH control and wedding agent dispersment intended for unregulated and unmonitored use on the course, that's all. And we know what they're using it, they said they're using it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we could say that.
How much or what, you know, I mean, we don't, we don't, we don't know what they're using or how much they're using.
We could acknowledge that they're using it, I mean, everybody understands that they're using it.
But is it appropriate?
Is that okay, Ben?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure it's applicable, but, you know, the question is, is it hurting anything? I'm not sure what the goal is here. I'm, I'm okay to say it if it's happening, but what's the, I don't know what the goal is. I don't know how it applies to the cistern, because that's what this application's about.
Wedding agents cause chemical changes in the shape of a water molecule, technically, to hasten its penetration through the soil, ultimately to groundwater, bringing the potential for fertilizer contaminants and pesticide contaminants along with it to groundwater. There are studies that show this. It's a concern.
So what are you suggesting that we add to our?
Let's go through there, so that we can get back.
But, I guess I have a question. Is it appropriate to be changing the part one, or should we be focusing on the part two and three, which is the one that we did? So if we want to include these things in our two, in parts two and three, I think that's probably more appropriate than the part one, which was somebody else.
I think it's okay to go through part one.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can, we can ask the applicant to change part one, or, we can change part one, or reference the correct information that should be in part one through the resolution, but.
But we would do that in parts two and three.
I think the applicant prepares part one.
Right.
The lead agency prepares part two and three. So like, what you're doing is-
The applicant prepares part one?
Yes.
The applicant prepares and submits part one, then-
So it's not, it's not of any worthwhile to go through this and point out any things that I think are missing?
That's what the part two is. I think that's what the lead agency is doing in part two.
But you should make, the comments you have for part one, we should, you should make them for part two and three.
Yeah.
But this is an application for a cistern and a pump house? So, I don't know. Okay.
All right, keep going.
You know what, I see things on part one that I'd like to go through.
Okay, yeah.
I don't think it harms anything.
No, we're just saying that we apply the part two. Yeah, I said, keep going.
Number two on page one. Just the town board and the Seva County Planning Commission should be added to the agencies, I think. Not a big deal, but they were, they're going to be a part of it.
So does a proposed action require permit approval or funding from any other government agency? That's the part you're saying?
Yeah.
Alright, so Town Building Department, and who else do they have to get permits from?
Is it what?
Who else do they have to get permits?
The town board and the Seva County Planning Commission. They commented on this, right? Or they were asked to, I believe.
Local determination.
What?
The local determination. That was the response.
Yes, it's a local issue.
That's fine.
Yeah.
But they were consulted, that's all, it just, it should be listed.
Okay.
Number four and five. I think check all land uses that occur on are adjoining or near the proposed action. I think the two boxes that should be addressed are aquatic and parkland, along with what's already been checked. I don't, this one confused me, the next page. Page, uh, the next, next page. Is the proposed action, and A is permitted use under the zoning regulations, and the answer given was no, and consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, and the answer is no. Uh, that confused me, those answers, frankly.
I guess it was a mistake, but I would guess it's just a error on, I, I doubt that. I think the general manager filled this out, and I can assume he meant to answer, yeah.
Okay.
Which one, for the comprehensive plan question?
No, for question number five, it looks like, page two. Go right on, page two, there's two number fives.
Another minor thing, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? The answer is yes, but does it meet or exceed the requirements? Does it meet it, or does it exceed the requirements? Just need an answer to that, that's all.
Well, it does say the proposed action will exceed described. So since they didn't describe, I, I read it as meet?
Again, with the, the one below, would the proposed action connect to an existing public or private water supply? Shouldn't we pick one, public or private?
Well, no, because they're asking if it does connect to a public or private water supply. So they're saying, yes, it does, because it, it's their private.
It's their private, it's their private, yeah.
So. I think that's correct. Mm-hmm.
Does the, number 13. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state, or local agency? Would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body? I, I, I think we should have the identification of the water body that exists on, what, the fourth hole? DEC designates it as a freshwater body, GP 70 class two freshwater wetland. And that was per PW Grosser.
Right. But I still think this was answered correctly.
And then the next 14. I think another couple of checkboxes, one on forest. There was forested areas, part of the club, and wetlands. The 17, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge? And will stormwater discharge flow to adjacent properties? The answer to that was no. But what, I, I don't, I didn't see anything that addressed any potential runoff from the new pump house construction.
Just the roof runoff? It would just be the runoff from the roof, right? The thought is that it'll get caught by the plantings.
Usually we have dry wells put in, right?
We could put that in the resolution.
The, uh, number 18. Does the proposed action include construction of, or other activities that would result in the impoundment of water or other liquids, retention, power waste, lagoon, et cetera? 116,300 gallon underground cistern to retain golf course irrigation prior to application. Shouldn't we add there that it also involves a dispersment of pH controls and wedding agents? It's not just water.
But that's not happening in the cistern?
Nope.
It's part of the action.
Cam, this is not a public hearing, no public comment on this.
Thomas, can you weigh in on this? Is this something that we need to note, even though it's not part? This is an application for a cistern and a pump house, which they're not using to distribute these wedding agents and things. Do we need to add this in here?
Yeah, I mean, so the applicant fills out the part one. Basically, it is just to tell us, what is this project about? Submitted this back in March. The board then, you know, as lead agency has to look, has to fill out parts two and three. And the relevant thing for part two and three is to say, is there significant, potential significant adverse impact? So, you know, this is really more informational. You know, I think if the wedding agents aren't being applied through the cistern, then I would say you should, you know, when we move forward with this, the board shouldn't, you know, reference that the cistern's distributing wedding agents, if that's not accurate.
I have a question for you, Thomas. Parts two and three are what we fill out, or our agent fills out. And those take into account all the additional information that we hear during the public hearings and the additional submittals that we receive after the applicant submits part one with their application, right?
Right.
So, parts two and three have more comprehensive information, because we've gotten more information at this point, right?
Right, yeah, I mean, part one is just a description of the project at a very base, you know, kind of basic level to direct the town, you know, on what they need to look at. Parts two and three is, is a measurement of whether or not there's large or moderate impacts from the project.
Alright, let's go to part two.
I was just gonna say, I think for part one, if we had questions or concerns about the completion of it, it should have been addressed during the public hearing process. So that we could have asked the applicant to then go back.
I can't say it now?
No, you can, I'm just saying, but I, like, that would have been the appropriate time to do it. But I also, my other comment is, I don't think that there's anything here that we all didn't know. Like, we know that there is, you know, parkland and there's forests, you know, aquatic nearby. So I don't think that there's anything that was misleading that we didn't do a deeper dive in during the whole review process.
I'm just looking to have things filled out appropriately, that's all, Amber. I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
Nope, nope, but we'll make sure we incorporate that into part two and three.
Okay, part two, question one. Will proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? And this kind of goes back to part one, question five. Said it is not consistent with the comp plan and zoning. So A, that's very confusing to me.
I think the, what you're, what the board's asked to do here is to look at all of the applicant submissions and all of the public hearing record and make a determination on that. It's not, I, I would assume that, you know, whoever filled that out probably didn't mean to put that, but it's really a larger determination of weighing all of the evidence. You know, what does the board think as far as answering that question, yes or no?
Well, this was PD, PW Grosser that filled this out, right?
On our behalf.
That's, so PW, they're making a recommendation. The board is the one adopting it.
Alright.
Determination.
So are you saying you disagree with?
I just, it's confusing, it's, it's not, it's not part of the comp plan or land use plan of the town? No, but shouldn't be? That's all, I'm just, it just seems like, um... Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of the land? I mean, they're, they're considering, Gardner's Bay is considering a membership increase now to fund future projects. Is that, uh, use, is that an intensity of use?
But that doesn't directly correlate to the cistern. The question is, does the cistern, does the installation of the cistern, like, create an intensity of land use? And it doesn't, that's why the answer's no. Because all of this is relating to the installation of the cistern and how the cistern's going to be used.
So the membership increase would have no relevance to intensity of use?
No, I mean, they could increase their membership without installing the cistern.
I was gonna say, not for this application.
Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. I, I don't think there's anything more critical about this project than public health and water. I, I, I don't know how you can answer that, no. I really don't.
They're not drawing more out of, they're not going above their limits for what they can draw, the 6 million gallons per year. And the wedding agent question is something that happens, any, any, like, it's, there's-
Wedding agents dispersed on the course.
I think-
But we-
Hold on.
jurisdictions now.
Critical environmental area, that's like a defined, that's a capitalized, like, defined term. Like, you know, that's a, something that believe the DEC would know. So it's, it's a capital critical, not like, not the adjective critical. So that's why I think Grosser put in no for that.
So, it's like, if this isn't actively changing the environment, like, that's not like you're burying the wetlands. You know, it's, that would be the, a change to a critical environmental area is if you're going and filling in wetlands. That, that's not happening in here.
There's, there's no impact- There's no impact to public health or water quality?
By installing the cistern, no.
Critical environmental areas are areas in the state which have been designated by a local or state agency to recognize a specific geographical area.
And I think your question is number 11. Believe what you're bringing up, relevant to number one.
I mean, I, I think there's, myself personally, I think there's a tremendous environmental issue of public health and water with this project. Whether you want to focus and tunnel it on the cistern, I'm looking at surfactants, pesticides and fertilizers, and pH additives. I mean, there's been studies done. JAMA Network did a whole scientific study on homes near golf courses. And the incidence of Parkinson's disease and cancer. And if you live within a mile, mile and a half of a golf course, you have a 126% increase in chance to come down with one of those diseases. Is that not an issue for public health and water?
Right, I mean, I'm saying, you're, I think what you're bringing up is, is not relevant to number four, but is relevant to number 11.
11.
Like, that's, that's where you're.
Okay, you're, you're shifting it down to 11?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah, whatever, I. Number seven, will the proposed action impact existing public private water supplies? Again, no mention of pH controls and wetting agents, use on a large scale, that will affect private wells. I mean, there, there is studies that show this. I, I don't, I can't, I can't separate the two, oh, the cistern and water, but pH additives and wetting agents, I, there's an effect to those, an impact on the groundwater and the surface water. The pond, the water's going into Cuckles Harbor at Gardeners Bay? Then number nine, just a question, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna? Has this, I don't think that this has been fully vetted. I haven't seen any study on it, to my knowledge. Number 10, should drainage plans have, have, should they have been submitted?
Number you.
Number 10.
So, no. All of these are answered no for a reason.
There's no potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problem?
It's, they already have a shed there. They're, they're putting a shed back. There's no change, there's no significant change that they're doing here. It's still the same shed on the same flat area. It's gonna have the same runoff as the existing shed, which is currently not an issue. That's why it's no. The cistern's underground, that's not gonna cause erosion.
My big concern is, where is the proof from the applicant? That application of pH controls and wetting agents over years of use will not affect environmental resources or human health?
Well, we have the water testing from the area. It was a problem, it would have shown up. It's still outside of the system.
They had a study done to show this, it had no impact?
They have water testing done annually. And if it were a problem, it would show up in that water testing. So, well, you know, it.
Who does the water, who does the water testing?
Cornell. They receive that in a. So, it's, this isn't really a change of practice on what they're, it's a change of how the water is being put through the irrigation system. So if these things were already causing an issue, we would know about them with the environment, like those water testing studies that they've been doing, that Cornell's been doing.
Down to the page two of two. You check one box, if any proposed action may result in one or more prominent, large or significant adverse impacts. And they check the other box that says will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Again, I go back to the pH additive and surfactant, the damage that that does, will do, how it will impact groundwater.
That's already happening without the cistern. So if we, if they didn't go ahead with this plan, that's already happening, so that's.
How do they, how do they disperse it now?
That's a different question then.
I think it's all part of this application, Amber. You're trying to break it apart. I think it's part of the whole application.
But how do you, it's already happening. They already add those things after it comes out of the well.
How do they put it down now? How do they?
They talked about it at the public hearing.
They're doing it manually, okay. I think, I think, I think where this comes into question, okay, is the fact that, and it's hard, when the initial application came in and the drawings were looked at, it did talk about fertigation on the plans, and although it was taken out, okay, and it was explained by the applicant that they had, they were not going to put waiting, wetting agents through the system, they acknowledged that they were doing it manually, okay? So it, I, I get it, okay, I know what you're saying.
No, they're putting it through the system. They're not putting it into the cistern, but they're putting it into the irrigation line when it comes out of the cistern. That's what I heard.
No, I, I don't think that's what I heard. I heard something different, okay? It wasn't coming out of the irrigation system because they said that they are not putting any of those wetting agents through the pump house. That was the, even though it said it on the drawings, I think.
Water comes out of the pump house, goes into the cistern.
Right.
And when the water comes out of the cistern, it's tied into the irrigation system. And at that point in time, my understanding, they were putting, injecting surfactant and pH additive at that time into the irrigation system.
We need a clarification of that.
My recollection is that it's applied in a much more targeted manner. It's not, it doesn't go into the cistern, it's added after the cistern in a targeted manner.
My understanding was, however.
I think the issue that I think you're bringing up, okay, is that even though we've deleted it from, at the pump house, okay, it, the intent, it was basically erased out or with, with, the applicant said he was, that was not the intent. So how do you secure that, that doesn't happen?
Well, what the applicant also said is that it's not something they do all the time, it's only if necessary. So if they do use surfactants, it's in a limited application. My understanding was, however they're doing it, and I don't know the particulars, however they're doing it now, is going to be how they do it if there's a cistern.
So I guess this question really is to yourself, is that if this were to move forward, is it not reasonable to say that these wetting agents will not be part of the system?
I mean, I think you can put a condition on, if, if you approve it, you can put a condition that, you know, workout language, that you wouldn't apply, I don't know, wetting agents.
Through the, through the system.
Yeah, like, I guess, however you, I don't know how you, you know, you could come up with a condition, though, that I think addresses the concern.
I just have a serious, serious concern with surfactants, Thomas, I really do. I, I, you know, the EPA banned Roundup. It didn't ban Roundup because of the herbicide that was in it. It banned Roundup because of the surfactant that were in the product that caused the real problem.
If we're going to legislate.
So, but, are we asking for a condition that says that they won't add surfactants to the cistern?
Trying to get a clarification of whether it's coming through the irrigation system.
This was discussed at the public hearing. I mean, we can ask for a further clarification, but they said that they weren't distributing it through the cistern. And if that's the condition, I don't think that's a problem, but I don't think they're regular, we can't stop them from putting surfactants down by hand.
Correct.
Or in another way, but they told us that they're not adding it to the cistern for general distribution because that doesn't make any sense for them. You know, it's added where it's needed and when it's needed, in a much more targeted manner. But I don't think, we have to ask the applicant, but I don't think they'll have a problem with saying, no, we won't add it to the cistern because they already told us that.
They're not adding it to the cistern, they said that. What they said was, they're adding it to the irrigation system when the water exits the cistern, that's all.
Yeah, and in, on green number 17, if it needs it, they'll go and they'll tap into the irrigation system on green 17, and they'll add it there. It's, I don't think we have a right to regulate that, especially via this application.
That's your feeling, Ben?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I'm not gonna change your mind, you know, you feel the way you do, I have concerns of my own.
Absolutely. And Albert, I respect your concerns, but I also think we need to deal with what's in front of us.
My question is, if you have concerns, shouldn't we be addressing that island wide? So that the public golf course, individual.
We're dealing with Gardeners Bay now, that's another issue, Amber.
Yeah, if this town board wants to take on surfactants on an island wide basis, sure, let's have that discussion, but that's a different discussion.
The, all right, page, where am I?
You're on page two of two.
Page four. Page three. Oh, all right, page three. Under impact on surface waters and wetlands. Overall, last sentence, overall, the proposed action would not have a significant adverse impact on the freshwater wetland. I mean, if you're distributing pH control and wetting agent, isn't that gonna get right into the wetland, into the pond, the freshwater pond? I, I would, I think that's, whatever.
I'm not a scientist, so I don't know.
Neither am I, Amber.
That's why.
But I can assume there's, there's water flow.
Right, but if it was going to be a significant adverse impact, we would already be seeing it, right? It would already be happening because it's, this is a behavior they already do, so.
Has there been water, have you seen water samples on the pond? I haven't.
Well, I don't think you need water samples to.
I know, I'm just asking, you're, you're minimizing, I'm just trying to counterbalance the minimization.
I'm just saying, if there was a significant adverse impact, you would visually be able to see it, and the death of an ecosystem is not happening, otherwise, you could, no.
All right. Where am I down? Page four, midway down, one of the bullet points. Use of wetting agents to reduce the turf grass irrigation demand. The wetting agent is applied at small rates and increments of two to four weeks, so it stays at the top of the plant and does not penetrate soil. That's just not correct. Wedding agents, surfactants alter water, make it a wider cell, and it's, make it easier to go through soil. That's just not, that's not true, from my understanding, what I read.
Now, there says, New York State DEC does not regulate wetting agents, surfactant applications.
I don't think that's a reason why we shouldn't consider their use and the repercussions. The, the next, page five. Minor point, impact on critical environmental area. The subject property is located adjacent to the iconic bay and environs, really should say within, not adjacent to.
Which one are you on?
Page five. Excuse me, second, second paragraph, impact on critical environmental area? The subject property is located within the iconic bay and environs.
So instead of adjacent to, you wanted to say within?
Yeah, minor point, but.
We actually need to check the SECA, New York State designation, to see exactly what the boundary is of the CEA before we make that change.
All right. I don't know. The, the next paragraph down, under visual impacts, the last paragraph. The planning board determine that. How the. Overdrawing and any contamination was a. The planning board determine that, how the overdrawing and any contamination was avoided. What contamination was investigated and what overdrawing was investigated, and what study did they have to?
Part of the planning board memo, are you specifically?
Page five.
No, no, no. I'm looking at the planning board memo. I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Well, I'm looking at the last paragraph under visual impact, and it refers, the
talk about the current comprehensive plan and some of the recommendations.
planning board mentioned, preserving the visual aspect, blah, 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 and avoiding overdrawing and contamination of the aquifer.
It's saying that they've taken those things into account when working on this application.
I don't know how they could make that proclamation, what studies did they have?
So, yeah, to read directly out of the planning board memo, second to last paragraph. Right. Therefore, we view this project as a step in the right direction in complying with the three elements of the comprehensive plan as mentioned earlier, preserving the visual aspect of a noted significant place, open space, recreation, and avoiding overdrawing and contamination of the aquifer. So, that's referring back to topics in the comprehensive plan that they were addressing. So they're saying that the application is taking those things into account.
I don't, I still, okay, avoiding the overdrawing of water, I mean, there's, what the cistern is capable doing, the plan to fill the cistern from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Okay, they're basing it on that, but the contamination of the aquifer, what are they basing that on? How do they, how do they make that determination?
Let's strike this, because it's not anything to do with visual impacts, which is what this paragraph is about. Yeah. Right, this is them referring to the comprehensive plan. But it doesn't, it doesn't need to be in this paragraph, visual impacts. Yeah, I mean, you can just take out the last sentence, avoid overdrawing contamination of the aquifer, and just leave it at open space and creation. Exactly, yeah. Because that's the visual.
I mean, I don't, what, what is, what type of surfactant does the club use now? There is, the EPA has a publication on carboxylic acid as being a real hazard. Is that something that's contained within their current wedding agent? I don't, we don't, I don't know what they use. Guess we would like to know what they use.
Look, I mean, with all due respect, these are actually interesting questions, and we should maybe look into the surfactant thing in another way, in a different way. I'm just, I don't, this is not an application to apply surfactants.
It's a consequence, Ben. I mean, you can't separate, you can't separate surfactants from the application, or wedding, wedding agents and pH additives, you can't do it. There's repercussions to the fertilizers and the pesticides that they put down as a result of the surfactant being laid alongside. I mean, there's, there's.
No, I'm not saying you shouldn't, should not bring up the question, I'm just having trouble connecting it to what we're supposed to be doing here today.
What are we supposed to be doing here today?
Reviewing the application for Gardeners Bay Country Club to add 116,000-plus gallon cistern to their system and a new pump house.
Don't you think that's kind of limiting the scope and impact that this could possibly have?
Maybe, but, but that's what our code is asking for, that's what the application is asking for. We actually, as a board, have no authority to regulate their use of surfactants. And I, and I think it's a good question, actually, Albert, I think.
Okay, all right, that's all. I'm just, I'm just raising questions.
Okay.
Does?
From the DEC info locator, we are adjacent to a critical environmental area, not within.
Oh, then, okay.
Juan, I can do a screen share on this. You're all good with it?
I'm good with it. If we were in the, swimming in the water, we'd be within the critical environmental area.
Does, another question that I just have is, does Gardeners Bay participate in the Long Island pesticide pollution prevention strategy? And if they do, can weed results of that testing be results of that testing? That's all, just a request.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
That's, that's, yes, they do, because that's what Cornell is doing. That's the studies and the testing that Cornell does.
And we get copies of that every year.
I thought that was a separate entity that did that, the Long Island pesticide pollution prevention strategy. Cornell does its own testing, this was a separate testing done.
I don't know.
I'm sure, I'm, my understanding, and I could be wrong.
Is Caitlin on the line? She might, she might have the answer to that.
The bottom of page four says additionally, ABCC participates in the voluntary Cornell cooperative extensions for our water monitoring project, which is part of the Long Island pesticide pollution prevention.
Okay, all right.
There we go. Thank you, Thomas.
That's all I have for now on the assessment form.
We have two things before us. We need to, I guess, incorporate any changes we want to make into this so that we can pass a resolution to take lead agency status and accept that it's a negative declaration, if everyone's in favor. So the only change that we'd like to make on the document is on page five, the, I guess, second paragraph above noise impact, and just take out that last little, and avoiding overdrawing contamination of the aquifer. Yep. That's all I had, that's all I had too. How does the board feel about adopting this with another declaration?
I'm sorry, Amber, what did you say?
How does the board feel about adopting this?
I just got a couple of questions I'd like to ask again. What I was, I, what I was, some notes that I made to myself, okay? Would, if the, if it's the approval, could it, is it, could it be conditional on the club agreeing to halt pumping to the cistern and irrigation course at any time that the town declares a level of drought warning or concern? I don't know, I don't know how, I don't know whether they can, we can, they, we have any influence on them during a drought condition.
So.
Can we add restrictions to their DEC permit to draw 6 million gallons? I think that's a good question.
But in the town code, if there's a drought emergency, like if it's an emergency, an islandwide emergency, then the town can put restrictions on everybody, and that would include golf courses, but it has to be a drought emergency, is what it says in the code. So if we do get to that kind of status, then yes.
I know we were dealing with droughts with the WU, may see them in different statuses, okay?
So if we got to that level, yes, we could.
And, Gordon, would it help if in the resolution, we just acknowledge what's in the code? That if there's a drought emergency, then we have the right to do that?
So I think what you're suggesting would go into the site plan resolution, not the resolution to adopt lead agency status. There's two resolutions that we're going to have going on here, so I think that that's something we should look at further.
Maybe these questions are more oriented, I just had a list that was hanging around, just wanted to go through it since we're, we're getting to that particular point. And this made it out of the left field, but during this whole application process, okay, did, did the town receive any fines, were there any fines issued for, for moving forward with the, this applicant, you know, digging a hole and doing all this other stuff without having the permitting process here?
I believe the justice court matter has been on hold through this, through the site plan review, like they just, it's been adjourned.
What was that, Thomas? I'm sorry, I didn't.
I believe the justice court matter has been adjourned throughout the site plan review time, basically.
Okay.
Once the board acts, then there's a, you know, then the justice court can resolve.
The issue that they went ahead with the cistern installation, dug the hole, put stone in the bottom, staged the cistern near the hole without a building permit, and they were told when they requested a building permit, they had, they had to go through site plan review. Is that, is that how?
Right.
Is that correct?
Well, my understa, I, I don't believe, since I've been doing justice court, that this case has come across, but I believe, so the way it typically works if somebody does work without a permit is you're trying to get them to submit an application either to the building department or the town board, you're trying to get compliance. And so they submitted the application, so we adjourn it while the application's pending, and then at the end, you know, you try to resolve it.
I guess this is after, after the resolution, I guess the comments that I have are something that are tag-ons or would be questions after the resolution.
Yeah, so the first question before us is, are we ready to accept this document with notification so that we do a resolution? So the first resolution on November 10th would be to adopt lead agency status and accept a negative declaration. So I'm just trying to like step through the process and accept that. So if we're good with that, now we can proceed to what do we want to do with the site plan review application and resolution? So now your questions come into play. You've got the floor, Gordon. You've got the floor.
Yes. I don't know where this, where this comes before the resolution or whatever, but I, I still go back, I guess I'm going back to the, the new T, the new Ts that were put in place, okay? I guess I'm still hung up on the fact that those Ts are, the 6 million gallons is what they're, what's controlling the volume of the amount of water per pump, okay? So, but the, having these additional Ts, okay, is, and, and where, and the piping is there, and watering from those locations, hand watering, we're still considering that not expansion? I mean, is that what I'm reading here from the board?
Because the expansion refers to the irrigation system itself, so hand watering is exempt in the code for everybody. So, you're not.
Got it, okay. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just making a statement that we have other Ts that have been added, and we're watering from those existing, not from those existing, but from new water lines where, where.
That water, even though it's hand watering, is still coming under that 6 million.
Right. I got it.
Still in the metered water source.
Yeah, which they only drew 4.9 last year.
Right. And they're tapping into existing, already existing, those bibs, I guess, is, I guess one way to say it, that are in the system, all right, like they're already built into the system.
Is it unreasonable to ask for, the town to have a compliance inspection?
You mean?
Oh, we really, we don't have the right to be on that property, okay? We've had this.
And so they submitted the application, so we adjourn it while the application's pending. And then at the end, you know, you, you try to resolve it.
I guess this is after, after the resolution, I guess the comments that I have are something that are tag-ons or would be questions after the resolution.
Yeah, so the first question before us is, are we ready to accept this document with notification so that we do a resolution? So the first resolution on November 10th would be to adopt lead agency status and accept a negative declaration. So I'm just trying to like step through the process and accept that. So if we're good with that, now we can proceed to what do we want to do with the site plan review application and resolution? So now your questions come into play. You've got the floor, Gordon. You've got the floor.
Yes. I don't know where this, where this comes before the resolution or whatever, but I, I still go back, I guess I'm going back to the, the, the new T, the new Ts that were put in place, okay? I guess I'm still hung up on the fact that those Ts are, the 6 million gallons is what they're, what's controlling the volume of the amount of water from the pump, okay? So, but the, it, having these additional Ts, okay, is, and, and where, and, and the piping is there and watering from those locations, hand watering, we're still considering that, not expansion? I mean, is that what I'm reading here from the board?
Because the expansion refers to the irrigation system itself. So hand watering is exempt in the code for everybody. So you're not-
Got it, okay. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just making a statement that we have other Ts that have been added, okay? And, and we're watering from those existing, not from those existing, but from new water lines where, where, where-
That water, even though it's hand watering, is still coming under that 6 million. Right.
Right, I got it.
It's still in the metered water source.
Yeah, which they only drew 4.9 last year.
Right. And they're tapping into existing, already existing hose bibs, I guess, is, I guess one way to say it, that are in the system, all right? Like they're already built into the system.
Is it unreasonable to ask for the town to have a compliance inspection?
You mean?
Oh, um, we, we really, we don't have the right to be on that property, okay? We've had this issue over what was it pre-existing? We didn't have, we didn't have the earlier plan or whether there's been some question of what was, so we now finally have, we now finally have this. So, so the question is, is it unreasonable to ask, how do, you know, it's like, we have a rule, but we don't have any way of enforcing it, okay? So I guess, is it unreasonable to, for the town to, um, we, we have a way of enforcing it because we have the stamped survey now.
Right.
So, and there is no record of what the irrigation system was in 2003. Every, it's a bunch of guesses and weird aerial photographs, which may or may not be right. We now have a certified stamped survey showing what the irrigation system is. And now we have a baseline. There was no baseline before and, you know, our bad. But if there's any further expansion beyond that stamped survey in front of us, then we have something to enforce and something to argue about. But how, how would you know? How would you know if there hasn't been or is?
Oh, the town can, the town can ask for an inspection.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
And they've offered it, I mean, I, I've walked the course, I know, I mean-
I wanted to make an inspection with a gentleman, which was a villainous objector. So I was rejected. So then I said, I would like to bring a, an installer of irrigation systems with me. And the applicant's attorney said, no, you've had your chance. Is that right, Thomas? Is that okay?
Not really.
Yeah, I mean-
I think what he's referring to here is an inspection going forward, like not, not what he-
That's exactly what I'm referring to.
Not what we're talking, you know?
I'm not looking to go backwards. I'm saying if this is a move forward, is it unreasonable to ask that the town have the ability to inspect for compliance? I guess that's really what it's saying.
That's a good point, to have it in the resolution.
Well, no, because you'd need a reason, like if there was a question as to whether or not there was some kind of construction happening on the golf course, then we'd have a reason to go and do an inspection, see what the work is.
How would you know?
I, I don't think, I, I-
Typically complaint driven.
Yeah, it's usually complaint driven, but I, I don't believe, you know, the town has continuing authority on a yearly basis, whatever, to inspect, without something in the town code allowing it. I don't, I don't think you can, I've had, you know, in prior, prior times, discussion around this issue, and I don't believe the town has jurisdiction to keep coming back, like on an annual basis, just in the, you know, in a board resolution. They could sell the property, could change over, um, you know?
Well, the, the reason I asked that question is that, you know, we, the, the original plans called for fertigation and it took, it would, and, and it was taken out. So, um, how do you, how do you, how do you make sure you don't have that?
Are you asking to have someone go and validate what we received in the survey?
Um, what I'm asking is that, we, we, when we had drawings, okay, they said certain things, okay, that were removed, okay? We removed collection and, and it's, it's been a lot of gyration here, okay? So, so now, okay, we said, well, then when we took out the pond collection or the collection of water going into the cistern, that was eliminated, but on the drawings, it did show fertigation in those pumps. So now we've eliminated that, okay? But the question I'm asking, okay, is, and we're saying, well, no, we're doing it manually by hand, which I, I get, I get it, okay? I'm just saying to you, but how do you, and how would you know?
That happens at the final inspection to get the C O for the installation of the cistern. So the building department will go with the plans and make sure that the plans match what was installed. So it, it happens in order for them to close the permit.
To begin with, absolutely, okay? I agree with that. But in, in, in the future, how would you not know that something else took place? Since you knew-
You can say that about any permit that we issue.
Absolutely.
Any application.
Absolutely.
So, you know-
The only difference is, is that the amount of water you're talking about with the, in the adjacent community is really a significant issue, okay? So I, I'm just, I'm throwing out some questions here. We're open for discussion, okay? See what everybody's thoughts were on it, okay? And I, you know, and obviously, you know, one of the things that I, I did, again, we're talking amongst the board here, this and that. So I, I always felt they really should be, should have been a hydrologist or someone similar to the way the D E C was asking for lateral movement of water, okay? I always felt that we set everybody's mind at ease, the community's mind, as well as the applicants that have had a, a, a third-party evaluation of the water. That, that, I'm just going on the record to say that was always my position. This way, if we're not guessing, you know, the community feels at ease, okay? The applicant feels at ease, but we didn't do that, okay?
But Grosse, P W Grocer has a hydrologist on staff who reviewed the application. So we did, we did review it with the hydrologist through P W Grocer. So that was part of their review. Caitlin told us in a public meter.
What are we talking about? Resolutions or conditions that we want to be part of? Yeah, I have a list at home. I did not bring it with me. I didn't realize we were going to get this far. But I didn't bring it with me, so.
Do you remember any of them? I was gonna say, do we want to take a break and you get them?
Yeah, I can run home, sure.
I, I'm just, because if we don't, if we don't keep moving forward on this, we've got, talk to me about timetable.
So we're, we're moving forward with this, we're looking to-
I mean, we have everything, so legally, I don't know which, if we're subject to any, like we have to close this within a certain number of days or?
I mean, if the, so the record or the hearing, the closed on October 20th, um, or, I think, October 19th. You have 62 days to make a, make a determination. Think, you know, you're at the point with the SECPRA, you know, there's a, there are certain deadlines that become an issue once you've, you know, we've kind of gone through that. So I, I think if possible, the board should try to wrap up the discussion today.
Do you want me to run home?
Listen, you know, I, I can, just a funny comment, okay, is that, you know, since we don't have an office here in town hall, it's, we're carrying stuff around in bags, so it's not, I'm, I'm sympathetic to what you go through because how many times, it's, it's easy to forget stuff, okay? I mean, I, I understand it, okay?
There also isn't, there are not work sessions next two weeks.
Right, that's, yeah, that's the concern.
Let me go, let me, let me run home.
All right, so we will adjourn the meeting.
Well, Amber, can we, what's, should we do the water aid? That's another long one, isn't it?
Do what?
Should we do maybe number six or no, we're gonna? I guess, yeah, let's wait.
Albert, you, you, you have to, should be here for the last one.
What's that?
You should be here for the other one as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm coming right up.
Yes.
Why don't you, why don't you, we're gonna wait for him to come back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can, yeah.
Recess the meeting. It's 15 minutes. It's 2:40, so hopefully at 2:55.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
All right, we will reconvene. We will reconvene the court session. All right. So Gordon, did you want to finish up with more notes? What would go into a resolution?
I can do my notes here. Okay. So there's no need, there's no need to talk about drought conditions, okay? Because you're saying we have it in the code under emergency. Have we ever had an emergency here?
No, not that I'm aware of. Yeah, I feel like maybe 10, 15 years ago. Usually based off of the same state and recommendations that the WAC looks at.
Thomas, could I refresh with you? Number nine on part two. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? Is not even a moderate impact to that on groundwater?
Grocer's made a recommendation that it's no or small impact. It's up to you, you know, the board has to decide whether you think it's moderate margins, you know, whether to answer that question yes or no.
I, I think it's a moderate impact.
Okay.
The issue is extremely important here on groundwater. The evidence that residential areas near golf courses and groundwater, I, I don't, but I'm only one person, I guess, right?
Right, because what I would ask is what is the change that is turning it from its existing impact to a greater impact? Because that's, that's what this question is.
I think there's a huge negative impact to groundwater.
But in a way, like, how does the installation of the cistern trigger that negative impact, that change?
Why you, why you segmentize this application?
Because that's what the application is.
No, but all these things are, this, the surfactant, the pH additive, they're part of the project. You can't separate those out, Meg. Why you separate those out?
I'm not.
That's what's impactful.
No, that's.
So you're saying, Albert, don't worry about that.
No, no, the question is, will the proposed action, the proposed action being the installation of a cistern, result in a change that's going to make this a large impact? So that's the question, is what is it about the installation of the cistern that's making a change? Right.
I'm not, I'm not going to argue, you guys decide. I just think this has an enormous impact. Negative impact, and I don't think it's the worst thing to trigger in, one of these answers to trigger in EIS, that's all.
So other, other considerations? Or conditions? Gordon, did you have other?
I, I just would like to have something that we're not going to use the, I know it's not on the drawings, they removed it from the drawings, but I want to make sure, I'd like to see if we could have something that we don't somehow rather at a future date revert to using fertile, fertigation and using the pumping system for wedding agents and other content, you know, other.
I think that's going.
To put those through the irrigation system?
Yeah, not, not to put them through the irrigation.
Not put them in the system.
Irrigation system is for water.
Right.
Are you saying to not put them in the cistern?
Put them in, not, not.
Irrigation system as it leaves the cistern and goes to the field.
As, as you recall, what the plans originally said, okay, it, it talked about fertigation at the pump level.
After the cistern.
I, I don't know really what it meant, okay, but we don't want that system, we, I, I really do not, would, would not like to have wedding agents and fertigation take place from the irrigation system. We're applying it manually now. Okay, I can't do anything about that.
Well, even if you say you can't put them into the system before they hit the green, what's the difference? I mean, it's probably more efficient to put them in the irrigation, you probably use less of them than if you actively apply.
Some of the research that I looked at, again, again, there's research all over the place, okay, but if it's not part of the, the system, why would you, so what you're saying is you'd like to leave it open so that they can add it later on?
No, I'm trying to understand what you're asking.
I'm, I'm, I'm taking out that it, since they took it out of the, out of the plans, out of the drawings, I just want to make sure it's out of the drawings.
They took it out of the plans and drawings for the cistern. I mean, if I remember correctly, and I could be wrong, it is, if they want to add some wedding agents to a particular green, they go to that green and they hook up a hose to the sprinkler heads and they spray it, but just at that green. What they've always said is they don't add it to the cistern and do a general.
Correct.
Wide watering. And I think, I, we have to ask them, but I don't think they'll have a problem with saying that, no, we won't add wedding agents to the cistern. Is that what you're asking, Gordon?
That, that's what I'm asking, okay, because it, it, it said fertigation at the pump level, okay, so I'm just saying, okay, since it's not there, I'm just making sure that it's not something that some later time comes back and says, well, we're, you know, we now want to do this.
Yeah.
Because it's not about fertigation, it's not about wedding agents, they're doing that manually now, so there should be no, because since they pulled it out of the drawings, why would you have a problem pulling it out and still continuing to do it manually? Otherwise, if they were going to do it through the pumping system, they should have left it in, that would have been part of the process.
I mean, during our little break, I looked at my notes and, yeah, that's, that's my recollection of what they said.
We're writing it as no wedding agents added to the cistern.
Yeah.
That's my note.
That's my recollection.
I really don't know what that expression fertigation means, okay? It's, it's also the addition of fertilizers, is that what that is, means as well?
Typically, like, fertigation would be putting fertilizer into the water system that's used to then spray, so that's not something that they've proposed. Usually, you want to be very targeted in what you're fertilizing, so that's something that you wouldn't want to do, of course not, yes.
I don't know why it was in there to begin with, but since it was there, when we looked at it, the original application, it's been taken out, so I don't think anybody should have a problem with that.
One of the comments was a dry well to capture runoff from the roof of the shed. Small roof, it won't need a large dry well. I also had putting in soundproofing. Soundproofing to comply with the 37 decibel level. That's all they already did. They already received that report, so, yes. But I just figured if someone asked to put it in.
Yeah, that was me, because I, I know the Gardeners Bay Association was very concerned about it.
Do you guys have any notes?
As far as the monitoring is concerned, okay, we have it, we have a baseline, okay? And what you're saying is, we'll, we'll wait till we see something visually that's not right, or someone complains, is that how you wanted to handle it?
That's typically how we would handle something like that, that would be the trigger. I mean, what Thomas was saying is that we can't mandate annual inspections.
I'm not asking about a manual inspection, I'm just saying if there was, I'm asking, I'm, I'm looking to just, we have such, we have problems with enforcement, and this is not suggesting there's anything alternative motives here, it, it's just that I, I, when we have, okay, we have rules, okay, but, you know, what do I say on a regular basis? Okay, we have rules and then we, and, and we don't always implement the rules, okay? And I'm, I'm not suggesting that's the situation, but I'm just, what you're saying to me is, I'm just repeating what you're saying to me is that, you know, if, we, we can't, we can't ask for monitoring anything, okay, on an annual basis, and I'm not asking for that, but what, what you're saying to me is that if we find something, then we address it that way, okay?
That is.
And then, and then we go, then we go and we say, hey, we think there's something going on, and, and make the phone call, is there something going on? And we'll start that. I'm just trying to find a way that would be not having to make accusations or whatever that, you know, I'm just, I'm trying to find the right combination here that's fair to the applicant as well as the, as the community, that people feel comfortable that, listen, we're moving this thing forward, so what are we doing? We're trying to make sure the community feels at comfort, has the comfort level that we, of what's going on, that's what I'm trying to do here.
Yes, I'm just having trouble understanding exactly what you're.
I don't know how to put it in there.
Well, normally, I mean, it's just, normally someone would call the building department and say, hey, I think there's a problem here. Then the building department has a right to go and investigate, correct?
Yeah, without probable cause, they shouldn't be on your property.
Right.
I'm not sure how we can make that better or different. I mean, if, if there's a complaint.
You follow up with the complaint, yes. It's just your list, Albert. We're just down to your list, Gordon didn't have anything else.
Yeah, I just, I think Gordon already mentioned it. The cistern cannot support any application of other product through the irrigation system. I, I mean, I guess this resolution specifically does not approve prior or future expansion of the irrigation system.
What are you reading?
No, this is a resolution, that's all, a condition, condition, excuse me.
Oh, okay, can you read it again?
Yeah, read it again, yeah.
Yeah, the resolution specifically does not approve prior or future expansion of the irrigation system.
Prior, we don't.
Prior doesn't, sorry, Ben, you go.
Well, we have no documentation of prior, what we have is the new survey. I mean, future, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Add prior into this with any sort of basis and.
Yes, and, and, Thomas, do we have any, are we going to, if they, if Gardeners Bay applies to the DEC for another 6 million gallons, is that going to come before the board?
I mean, I think the board can take a position on that application.
So it will come before us and then to, to review?
Well, it's a DEC application, but I, I think it would, the, the board has the ability to, you know, submit comment, to take a position on that application.
All right.
Forget, though, in the public hearing, Gardeners Bay Country Club agreed to give a 60 days' notice before they made such an application, so that should be a condition.
We'd have to also sort of think that if they would be applying to the DEC for such a significant change in the water draw, there would be some change happening to the golf course that require permitting on the town's part. If they're, you know, you're not going to need additional 6 million gallons unless you're expanding the irrigation system or building more buildings or structures, or there'd have to be some reason that you would go through that extensive DEC process that the town would have to be involved in. Which would then trigger cycling review, right?
That made it into the resolution from the public hearing, I, I apologize.
Yeah, let's start it up.
Right, another condition is, I don't know how you want to word it, strict compliance with the procedures set forth, the six NYCRR, part 617 are required. Town board confirms that the applicant, confirms with the applicant that a three-foot freeboard proposed to keep the cistern at capacity of 116,300 gallons. If the cistern is filled outside of the 7 PM, 7 AM current schedule, there could be potential impacts to neighboring wells. That's all, or it has a condition that if there is, we, it's, it's addressed.
Well, so it's the timing of the filling or?
Or the height of the water.
You know, the capacity.
If they're maintaining that they can fill it from 7 PM to 7 AM.
That was in the, that was in the report, the environmental.
To suit their needs.
I don't know whose report that came from Grocer, or someone made that comment.
So I guess my question is, how do we enforce that? That's just the practicality of enforcing that condition, I'm just, how, how do we do that? I'm just, how do we do that?
I don't know. If we can make it a condition of the resolution, you know, to enforce it? Yeah, I don't know. Maybe there'd be some point in telling, I don't know, Nick.
I'm trying not to put in things that are unachievable. I want whatever we put in to be an achievable goal. I guess get that language to Thomas to.
So wait, the request here is to put a condition that the cistern can only be filled from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM? Is that what we're asking?
There was something in one of the environmental reports. Okay, I, let me see, I have it here.
It had a caveat. I mean, yes, definitely confirm the three-foot free board in the cistern. And that's the design recommendation. So that, absolutely add that in. But the filling of the cistern had a caveat. Do you recall specifically where you got that from, Albert?
Sorry?
Do you recall specifically where you got that from?
Just in terms of interfering with the media, you know, neighbors' wells if they draw more outside of the hour at 7:00 PM with.
I believe it was a PW grocer.
PW grocer.
It was a, it had a comment on it. Yeah, it would have. The question, the comment made by grocers, is that feasible? Does that, is that realistic?
In the interim, Albert, you're looking for that, okay? This is a, you know, we, our regulations call that you cannot fill cisterns from groundwater. So this is kind of like an exception. So how do we not make this a, something that becomes, that could come back in some other way?
Yeah, well, I don't.
Meaning we had it that you can't fill cisterns, like in residential cisterns, you don't fill them with a hose, okay? So how do we, this is like a, I don't know what you want to call this, it's like a one-off?
It's a grandfather.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think the. Well, nothing's changing as far as where the water's coming from, right?
No, it is, yeah. It's still the same DEC regulated number of gallons coming from the same well. It's just being buffered with the cistern. So instead of pumping directly onto the turf, it's pumping into the cistern. There, the cistern is going to send it out to the turf. So it's, there's no change. It's just an extra hole.
Yeah.
Well, they were saying that the existing, I'm sorry. It's the March 5th grocer report on page two. March 5th, first paragraph on page two. It says, based on the current application, it seems that the current irrigation system well can operate 120 gallons per minute and has a maximum watering cycle of 12 hours per day from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM daily. So they're saying that's the existing time that they typically water with the current system. It's part of the calculation.
They can't water during the day when people are playing golf.
Right, they'll get wet.
Unless they umbrellas to everybody. So I'm not sure how that restriction makes any sense to be applied to a cistern.
I don't think they were talking about the irrigating portion. I think they were talking about filling the cistern. Because eventually you run the cistern, as I recall. It has, okay, I don't have enough.
The point of the cistern is that if they're going to use the 48,000 or 52,000 gallons a night, whatever, there's leftover water in the cistern. They're saying you could water for two days out of the cistern without turning the well on. That's the whole point of the cistern is to reduce how frequently you have to use the well.
With the larger pump, I believe it was that it ran only for seven hours, okay? And then it was, they needed the extra water coming in at the same time they're emptying it, they're filling it.
No, because the typical usage was less than the volume of the cistern. That's the whole point, is that the cistern holds 116,000 gallons, but they use about 45,000 gallons per day when they irrigate. So that's the whole point, is to give you a buffer so that you're not drawing all of, you're not drawing 116,000 gallons every night. It's you just be replacing whatever the 45,000 are that you used. And it's more controlled over a longer period of time.
Given that restricting the filling of the cistern to overnight is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM daily?
But at the same time, I mean, just, it's enforceable and we don't.
If it's, if it, again, that would be complaint driven and code enforcement.
If you're against the wall of the pump house, I mean, that doesn't. There's no restriction now on when you can use it. It's just, it's just dictated by logic. But one of their questions was, you know, is that feasible?
I'm not advocating one way or another, but
Right.
Are we shooting our, isn't the point of the cistern is to run it in a way so that it lessens an immediate draw and spreads it out over time?
Yeah, yes.
So if we limit the time you can run the cistern, doesn't that hurt us?
Yeah, it means you'd have to pump at a stronger rate. So if you give them more time to do a slow draw to fill the cistern, it's less impactful than giving them a shorter period of time to fill the cistern.
I mean, look, I'm no water guy, but that makes, I'm just asking the question. It seems to be.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. But, yeah. What else, Albert?
No, I don't.
Others, okay.
Thank you.
So you have what you need to draft up a resolution? I'll send to my notes.
I have notes. I've got six points in here. Three, I guess I didn't agree with three of your points. All right, okay. All right, so then you'll wrap this up and circulate it to all of us and we will give you any edits and put this on for resolution on November 10. Next up is Bagan Dacke. Wait for a second, but I've enabled it for to be found. Yeah, I'm going to reply on the golden's day. I do need extended sign test. On this one, we.
I guess you weren't here last week.
Ben was out.
Sorry?
You weren't here last week, I believe.
Uh, no, no, I wasn't. I don't think so, I don't know.
Yeah, so we were saving it just to get your input as well.
I'm just trying to dig up the last WMAC report from this. That is the wrong one.
Okay, so on this one, the discussion that we had, if we're going to try and distill it down to our options, one, approve as is. Two, deny it as is. Or three, make a recommendation of a change that we'd like to make. Thomas cautioned us against redesigning because this, any modifications we suggest will have to go back to the DEC. If we try and impose, like shorten it.
Yeah, just, Ben, as a reminder, this is under the old dock code, which, three, a private dock may not extend either more than 100 feet offshore from the mean high water mark on the owner's upland property or to beyond the point where mean low water depth reaches four feet, whichever of these two conditions occurs sooner. So that's the applicable section for length.
This is currently at 90 feet from mean high water gets out to the two feet of depth.
Thomas, can you read that again? Sorry?
Yeah. A private dock may not extend either more than 100 feet offshore from the mean high watermark on the owner's upland property or to beyond the point where mean low water depth reaches four feet, whichever of these two conditions occurs sooner.
Got it. This is 90 feet into two and a half, right?
Two, two.
Two.
Although it says 2.5 right there. And then it gets shallow again? Yes.
90 feet from mean high water, right, to the end of the dock? And then the ramp and etc.
It gets to. It's 2.0. See, come on, just. I guess maybe just, you know, mean high water.
Yeah, it's just a measurement.
I thought it said two and a half.
Yeah, it says varies. Yeah, obviously, tide's spinning out.
Oh, you're right, 2.0. Your eyes are better than mine.
6.
We'll get Theresa Mason's last report. And.
Yeah. Very Gardeners Day.
So she did not recommend not putting the dock in. She just said, don't use CCA, retractable steps and ladders and would like to not see utilities such as water and electric up there. Especially electric.
Stay quiet somehow.
Who wants to, who wants to talk first?
You know where I stand. I don't think this is a setting for a dock. This is really a bucolic creek. And, I mean, our comprehensive plan is protection of roadside views and scenic distance. And to put a 90-foot dock out into the water from the, from mean high water is an obstruction. The town has spent, there's one other dock, I don't know if it's their neighbors, but there is a shorter dock that exists, I don't know how many years ago, that was allowed. But I don't think docks should be in Dickerson Creek. We spent money on Turkam's Rest across the street. There's wetlands in there. The property goes all the way through to Fresh Pond, there's walking trails. Laura Tunnel and John Needham sold their property on the eastern shore, which has spent millions of dollars to kind of make this an environmental picture. I'm, I'm opposed to the dock. I think at some point, we should draw the line. In this case, I think it's warranted.
My one concern is that this is under the new code. I think we could deny it. This is under the old code.
I think based on the comprehensive plan and the fact that we've spent so much CPF money to preserve property around the creek, I think it justifies keeping it as it is.
Anybody else want to chime in? Yeah, I mean, I, I completely understand where you're coming from, Albert. You know, I'm not a super fan of the location or, but I think if it were under the new code, we'd have grounds because we did write that kind of thing into the new code. Unfortunately, the old code doesn't have any of those types of conditions. So because it came in under the old code, I have to follow the code. So even if I don't like it, I still feel like I have to approve it. Because we did look at that, we understood it was a problem and that's why we rewrote the code. That's why we have a new dock code. So moving forward, the new dock code applies and then we have that kind of leverage. But unfortunately, that's not what I'm seeing here.
I think we have a basis to deny the dock if we so choose. That's always been the case. Well, the code, the old code, I, I know what you're saying, Meg. I just, I think at some point, and I think in this particular case, we have a basis to reject the dock.
Or Benjamin?
Still looking for the, the last WMAC report. Wasn't this a split vote on their part?
They never reviewed the application again besides the first time when it was submitted and it was split.
Yeah, it was a split vote the first time.
And don't we always have the right and privilege to sort of protect Shelter Island?
I think so, Ben.
Okay. Just got it, hold on.
So just writing, there you go. So WMAC, this is from April 14th of 2025.
Two to two, one abstention, one recusal.
So you had the answer. It said, whoops. Good at zooming. There are inconsistencies between the permit and the plans and the proposed use, the WMAC is looking for clarification. Uh, the applicant temporarily, temporarily withdrew the application, so maybe there's another report after this?
I just want to say it was May 6th.
May, okay, let me try the May report.
It was 222. It was split down the line.
Right. The DEC clarified that motorized vessels cannot be moored at this dock, though it could be used to launch small non-motorized vessels such as kayaks. They voted 2211. Opponents argued a dock at this location would not be in the best interest of the town. Proponents argued the dock met the current criteria in the code. So what is that, 242 against one abstention and one absence?
No, it was, um,
Stay in, one recusal.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And there, there were some absences.
Well, there's one, yeah. Six people running.
Yeah, I was like, I thought there were seven on the board. That makes sense, though. Okay.
So I'm just writing down reasons to approve, reasons to reject. So under approval, that it's under the old code and it's compliant. And then also, there's no continuing tracing through the wetlands for the property owners to take the kayaks out. Under reject, so far I've got surrounding CPF purchases and the vista. What am I missing?
I think you got it.
Where do you want to go with this? Because I presume, I mean, prior town attorneys always like to get a sense of which way the board's going to go, so that you write the resolution supporting that point of view. So it's either in, including the reasons for rejecting and the reasons for approval. So I presume that's how you you want to proceed.
That would be helpful, okay.
Okay, just checking.
Well, the clear view to saying yes to this is that it's under the old code and it meets the town code. The clear view to say no to this is that no matter what the town code says, we, as the board, have the obligation to protect the environment of Shelter Island, be it vistas, be it wildlife, be it whatever.
I'm just saying that the code is really an expression of that like responsibility.
But sometimes that expression can be incomplete. Do we need to? Do we need to take further advice from counsel in a legal session?
I, I, you're always welcome to, I mean, I, if you feel like you need advice, please, you know, please do ask.
Amber, where are you? I'm in a dock, I'm, I'm in a quandary here, okay, because of the last conversation I had, you know, with Thomas when we it's not my job to design a dock. It's not my job to, to suggest what should be done. And I think you said it's, it's, um, you know, it's our job to, um, you know, it, you know, if, if you deny it, you're denying it as it is. When I look at it, I'm, I'm really denying it as it is, and I don't want to say I don't want to design, I can't, I don't want to die, I don't want to design a dock, okay? But I do have the issue over the vista and I do have the, um, you know, the, 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 the environmental thing, but so if I had to make a decision, if this, looking at it like this, I would be a denial as is, okay? But I, I'm withheld from saying what I would really like, okay?
Well, I mean,
I mean, that was, generally, I'd say you shouldn't design projects, but I mean, have, you know, if you have feelings on what you would like to see on the site, I it's, there's no legal reason to stop you from saying that.
I mean, I too, I, if I was going to do something, I think I would see whether or not it could be shortened 20 feet? Like if I launched.
I, I, my feeling was that if they could, I, I mean, if this were presented as a 50-foot dock, oh, you know, I, the, the 30, the, the last 36 feet really are what are, um, that I think that would take care of the vista part and it would take care of a lot for me, okay? But I, again, I'm not, I don't want to tell anybody how to build a dock. I would just want to, but I, I think at this, at this particular time, I think it's exceptionally long and, and I think it does, it does have an impact on, on the environment. So it is, as it is, I'm, I'm in denial, okay?
I mean, I, I would put on the table 70 feet as opposed to the 90 feet. It will require the applicant to go back and get DEC approval, who knows if that's possible?
There really are place, just Thomas said, to design a dock?
I, well, when we started.
That would be a choice that they would bring to the table, I guess.
I mean, I, I don't think it's the board's responsibility to design a dock, but at the same time, if you're, I think it's, can be helpful to signal if you have a preference for something else, but I think you need to vote on what's, what's in front of you. But I think it's helpful. If, if you feel like you want to signal that you would be in favor of another proposal, then there's nothing stopping you from saying that.
Right, no, we have a I don't know.
I'm, as, as I'm looking at it, I'm in denial, that's what I am, okay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm stuck in a position where I feel like I have to approve it because it meets the code. And if I'm not enforcing the code, then why am I here? You know, our, our job is to legislate and to follow the code. I mean, so if there's a problem with the code, we need to change the code, and in this case, we did. But unfortunately, this is under the old code. So, you know, the new code gives us these options that we don't have under the old code. So, you know, based on the application as it's presented, it's 90 feet, not 100 feet. So it's less than the required, you know, the maximum length and, you know, it meets the old code standard. So as much as I don't want to see it there, I feel like I'm trapped by the code.
Benjamin?
Oh. Not clear where you are on this, Amber. What's your position again?
I was going to suggest approving it, but only at 70 feet with DEC approval. And if the applicant chooses not to go forward with that, then that's all they're approved for, so.
And
it's a compromise.
And how do you feel about 50 feet?
I think 50 feet is too shallow.
50 feet?
If you're looking at the drawings.
Go, hold on.
30 feet to 1.4 feet of water.
Yeah, well, if it's for a kayak, what am I, it's a kayak dock. That's okay. It's not great, but it's okay.
That's also the end of the ramp, so you need a flat spot after the ramp, I would think. And just for safety.
What I can say is I think 90 feet's too, too long. That much I will say. If this is 90 feet or nothing, then I think 90 feet's too long. If we can work out, if there's a way to do this, so we can look at other alternatives that preserve the vista and the beauty of Dickerson Creek without a big 90-foot dock sticking out in the middle of it.
If you go to 50 feet, you've just taken off the kayak launch, which is flat, and then you're on the sloping ramp and
Well, the dock can be modified to accommodate that. I mean, it's really very high, but I'm, I'm not getting into the design of a dock, okay? That's right.
Well, that's why I didn't want to start to get into that, because the Army Corps of Engineers, they did make modifications, the length of the dock was shortened from 100 feet to 90 feet, and the height of the dock was raised to be four elevated feet above the vegetated wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't want to get into that. And there was a bench that was removed.
Which isn't, which is a good goal, to protect the entrance and exit to the creek. That's something worth considering.
That's why, I mean, I was looking at this earlier today, and that's why I came up with 70 feet.
And the dock next door is 50, correct?
I think no.
No, no.
I'll tell you in a second. Measure. It's yours. Yep. And then from they go up land to we'll try and handle that one, because that's also got a catwalk. I don't know. Yeah, so I can't tell if it stopped here or back there. Because it does have sort of very, um, start. 70 feet?
Dock next door is 70?
Yeah, if you take it from here, I'll
Including the catwalk.
Let me share my screen, yeah, I'll show you.
Because I'm looking at it and it, it comes out to 1.1 feet of water.
How do you figure that?
Well, that's what this map says. Now, what else? Where has the picture of the boat? And
Oh, over on the side there, okay, got it. So if we take the measurement from, like, this looks like the beginning of the platform, right? Like this area, you see my cursor? That sort of looks like the beginning. I'm not sure, because I'm looking on the side, so.
Well, should we, should we, yeah, shouldn't we be measuring for mean high or mean low?
Yeah, yeah, but that's an average.
But yeah, mean.
And, and I feel like this is mean high. I go where it's mean high, then I'm at 40, I'm at 50 feet, 48.79.
Yeah. That, that's what I remember from the last time I measured this.
But then they do have plastic floats. Want me to pull the application?
Sounds like you're designing a dock. No, I, I did, I did like, I did like that one dock that was in Chase Creek where it was a kayak and they, they had steps going into the, the entry, I mean, it just it's easy to get in and out.
Right, the dock just ended in steps into the water.
Mm-hmm. And you don't need more than a foot and a half to launch a kayak. So Thomas, while, while this is in front of us, do we have the, we have the ability to adjourn this for? I don't know.
This this closed on 29th?
Oh, again?
All right. So 62 days.
Send this one back.
Yeah, so it's November 30th, it's 62 days, so I think I think the board has to take action at the next, you know, November 10th meeting.
Right.
Right. It's December 1st, will be too late. Yeah.
If you express an interest in considering a shorter dock, doesn't that throw them back to the DEC?
Yes. We still have to take an action on this application, right?
Yeah. Yeah, no, it would have to be, if we suggested, you know, 70 feet or 50 feet, then we have to, um, you know, with the stipulation that they get DC. then we have to, you know, with the stipulation that they get DEC approval before going through the building from.
And that's going to take longer than November 30th.
But at least it's out of our jurisdiction and it's back in DEC's jurisdiction.
And then we have acted on it, quote unquote.
Yes.
Yeah. Most, like many municipalities, if not most, you put the condition of approval as the DEC.
Okay. So we can act on this and some condition upon DEC approval. And we can do it at the next meeting in the timeframe.
But what are you suggesting? You're suggesting 50.
I'm suggesting 50.
I'm not suggesting 70. Because I feel like 50, then it is a bigger redesign of the dock. Whereas the current design is just lopping off some of the kayak launch.
November 11th, isn't that, uh, better?
Because if you go to 50, then you're on the slope of the ramp.
Work session until the 18th.
18th, right.
Yeah.
Right.
I feel like for safety's sake, there should be some flat area at the end of the ramp. Because if, say, for example, you're wheeling your kayak down and it gains momentum, at least the flat part will slow you down. I feel like if you're just going down a ramp with no end, you're just going to go swiftly. It's not going to work. I feel like you need some flat area in there, but that's just.
It gets away, let go, it's a kayak, it'll float.
Yeah, but, you know, it might take you out in the process.
These are never easy questions, are they? So we're all over the place. We have Albert, a hard no. We have mega hard yes. We have Amber at 70. We have me at 50. We have Gordon.
No.
Doesn't know.
Yeah.
Well, yes, because I'm not designing the dock. I don't want to design the dock.
Yeah.
That's why I'm suggesting 70, not 50, because that is a design.
You know, and.
It's decision time.
Think not designing a dock is a good thing.
70. 70.
Hold on a second. Give me one second. Second. Look, I don't want to say no, I don't want to say yes. So if we're presented with the application that's in front of us, and that's kind of the only option. It's not a good option. I say no.
We knew over to the no column. All right, that's three. Guess you know what to do. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Establishing dock fees. We held this, we had come up with a plan last week. I'm just trying to decide if we can do this quickly or if we should bump this.
I say, Bob.
Yeah, I was just going to say, because three of us are going to a thing on working waterfront legislation.
Yeah, maybe more things to consider here, but let's push it.
All right, we'll bump that.
You know, it's auto.
Yeah. So then we have board member reports before we go into a special. I got it somewhere. So we were going to try to determine the value of the.
Yeah, we'll bump it till next time. Establishing the dock fees. Just, we were waiting for public comment. Don't seem to have a room full of people interested in dock fees, which I was surprised, I'm a little surprised at.
You know, people who walked out unhappy.
So go back to, revisit this?
Revisit this on the 18th.
18th, okay.
Anything burning board member reports?
Pass.
Yeah, I was going to pass too. I'll do capital planning and grants next time since CDBG was the biggest one. Just quickly, we've got jobs out there. We're going to start interviewing for assessment aides. Oh, board members. Did you look at Tom Coco's interview schedule to see if anyone was available to sit in on?
Okay, tomorrow, yes.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, I can't make the one, two event tomorrow, so.
And who's here?
Albert, are you able to sit in on the assessment aid interviews?
No.
Okay, right, so it'll just be you. So it'll be you and Judith and Coco.
Good. Can I sit in your seat?
Actually, Coco will sit. I don't know, you're going to have to tackle Coco for it.
This is her domain when the committees go on.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I know, go ahead, if you're on tomorrow.
Oh, don't we have the preliminary site plan review?
Yes.
And I'm going to recuse myself anyway?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, who signed up for that one? You two?
I responded that I can go.
Okay, yeah. I don't think I'll be back from the dentist yet. All right, we have part-time home maintenance repair mechanic, assessment aide. There's a Suffolk County Career Fair going on Wednesday, November 12th, 4 to 7, at Suffolk Community College in Brentwood. And that's it. First announcement, so.
I do have one quick one. If you're a senior and you're receiving SNAP benefits and those have been sort of cut at the moment, you can reach out to the Senior Center. The Senior Citizens Foundation has money set aside to assist people who have lost their SNAP benefits in this interesting time. So if that's you, feel free to reach out to Senior Center and they can help you.
Is there any SNAP benefit coming through or did the current federal administration just kill it all?
I think they just stopped administering it during the shutdown. So, yeah, if you've lost that benefit in this period of time, feel free to reach out to the Senior Center and they can help you.
Okay, great.
Through the Senior Foundation. So thank you to the Senior Foundation.
Yes. Before we go into the special meeting, the reason for the special meeting is that we and our grant writer apologized for notifying us so late. It's an easy grant. It's a transportation grant for the seniors. It's a 5310 transportation grant. And the application is due on Monday. So we have a resolution to apply for that grant. It's a 50% matching grant and we have town money budgeted for, like, we call, we put it under the driver's line. So that's, that's where we get the match from, so. But it's a, it's a good grant, so we want to make sure we continue to apply. So that's what that's all about.
Sounds good.
Then we had just one on-call driver that got overlooked in the last round. So we're just getting him retroactively appointed. So, so make a motion to close the work session and go into a special meeting.
And make the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, go ahead.
Be resolved that the supervisors authorized to apply for a federal grant of up to $35,000 under section 5310 of chapter 53 of title 49 United States Code for the Funding to Support 50% Share of Two Years of Operational Costs for Transportation Provided by the Town Senior Center to Medical Appointments, Shopping, Outings, and Other Destinations to Meet the Needs of Elderly Individuals and Individuals with Disabilities. So moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Be resolved that John Cronin is hereby appointed to serve as on-call as-needed AAA driver for the Senior Center at a rate of $25.09 per hour, not to exceed 20 hours per week, retroactive to September 15th, 2025. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, that's it. Thank you, everybody. I'll make a motion to close the meeting. Second, all in favor?
Aye.